Welcome to the Township of Nutley's reorganization meeting for 2024. I'm gonna let Commissioner Kelly do the pledge of allegiance.
So for the pledge, we're gonna bring up representatives from the town's veterans organizations. So we have representatives from the AMVETS, the American Legion, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars.
Who said it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. As a Republican, for which it stands, my nation, our God, in this court with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the national anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the lark's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last beating? With bright lights and bright stars through the peril thus fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket rankling, the bomb bursting, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Great, great job, Zach. Father Tom?
Let us pray. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power, might, wisdom, and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude. These men who take today the oath of office as commissioners here in the town of Nutley, and one who will govern as mayor of the township, watch over them and their families. Protect and bless each of them with wisdom, honesty, integrity, right judgment, good health, and fairness to all. May they always execute laws with justice, mercy, and seek to restrain crime, vice, and immorality. As elected officials, guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by guidance and powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We pray for our township after a period of campaigning with the hope that all those elected will lead at every level and work for the common good of people who dwell here. Heavenly Father, God of all wisdom, as we gather on this day of inauguration and new beginnings, imbue in these elected officials an abundance of wisdom, patience, and right judgment, and strength of character to do the right thing and make wise and unselfish sound choices. As they begin to meet, organize, and plan for the years ahead, which will be filled with many projects that can bring prosperity and financial security to this township, aid them to be patient with one another, refrain from discord, malice, always seeking harmony and effective compromise. This afternoon, we pray for wisdom and not rhetoric, generosity not indifference, justice not patronage. May they not erect barriers by harsh words but build bridges that bring people together through kindness and charity. We pray for leaders gifted in diplomacy, blessed with character and integrity, that our security comes from a relationship of trust and communication and not divisiveness. Father, as we prayerfully reflect, we recall the words of First Timothy in the Holy Book which speaks about praying for those in authority. Quote, "First of all, then I ask that supplication, prayers, and petitions, and thanksgiving be offered for everyone, for kings and those in authority. They lead a quiet and tranquil life in devotion and dignity," end of quote. For our part, give each of us patience that we in turn give our officials a chance to govern with grace, compassion, love, support, and sincere effort to celebrate sage decision-making. Likewise, we commend to your unbounded mercy all the constituents of this town of Nutley. May we preserve in union that peace which the world cannot give. And after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We make our prayer through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Remain standing for God bless America, Zach.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the light with the light from above. From the mountain to the prairies, to the oceans, white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
You can sit and relax. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting agenda for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. The time is now 12:13. This is the reorganization meeting. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, adequate notice that this notice was published on in the December 7th, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Patraco?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm going to be swearing in Commissioner Evans first.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
I, Thomas J. Evans.
Do solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
Justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Commissioner?
All the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Effective May 21st, 2024, through May 16th, 2028?
Effective May 21st, 2024, through May 16th, 2028.
In the township of Nutley?
In the township of Nutley.
County of Essex?
County of Essex.
State of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Thomas J. Evans?
I, Thomas J. Evans.
Do further solemnly swear?
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, I will be swearing in Commissioner Tucci.
I, R. G. Tucci?
I, R. G. Tucci.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And? And justly?
And justly.
Perform the duties of the Office of Commissioner?
Perform all the duties of the Office of Commissioner?
Effective May 21st, 2024, through May 16th, 2028?
Effective May 21st, 2024, through May 16th, 2028?
In the township of Nutley?
In the township of Nutley.
County of Essex? State of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God?
So help me God.
I, R. G. Tucci?
I, R. G. Tucci.
Do further solemnly swear?
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God?
So help me God. Congratulations.
Commissioner Scarpelli will be sworn in by our Judge Alan Jenning Temple.
My family and DPW letter, we are up.
Left hand on the Bible, right, Dr. Cho?
I don't know how long I'm gonna be here. I want a good picture.
Please raise your right hand, put your left hand on the Bible.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli?
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties?
All the duties?
Of the Office of Commissioner?
Of the Office of Commissioner?
Effective May 21st, 2024?
Effective May 21st, 2024?
Through May 16th, 2028?
Through May 16th, 2028?
In the township of Nutley?
In the township of Nutley.
County of Essex?
County of Essex.
State of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God?
So help me God.
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli?
I, Joseph P. Scarpelli?
Do further solemnly swear?
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution?
Of the State of New Jersey?
Of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear, bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established?
In the United States?
In the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. That was amazing, honestly. Our next swearing in is Commissioner Patraco.
Joe and Jerry, come up here with me. My father couldn't make it today. So Joe's filling in.
I, Alfonso Patraco? Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
Justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties?
Of the Office of Commissioner?
Of the Office of Commissioner?
Effective May 21st, 2024?
Effective May 21st, 2024?
Through May 16th, 2028?
Through May 16th, 2028?
In the township of Nutley?
The township of Nutley.
County of Essex?
County of Essex.
State of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God?
So help me God.
I, Alfonso Patraco?
I, Alfonso Patraco?
Do further solemnly swear?
Do further solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution?
Of the State of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith?
And that I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance?
To the same?
To the same?
And to the governments?
And to the governments?
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our next swearing in, excuse me, is Commissioner Kelly. The Honorable, come on, Alan Jenning Temple.
That's, that's true. There is two of you.
All right. I, John V. Kelly III?
I, John V. Kelly III?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All the duties of the Office of Commissioner?
All of the duties of the Office of Commissioner?
Effective May 21st, 2024?
Effective May 21st, 2024?
Through May 16th, 2028?
Through May 16th, 2028?
In the township of Nutley?
In the township of Nutley.
County of Essex?
County of Essex.
And the State of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God.
I?
I.
John V. Kelly III?
John V. Kelly III?
Do further solemnly swear?
Do further solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution?
Of the State of New Jersey?
Of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith?
And that I will bear true faith?
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established?
In the United States?
In the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're gonna move on to resolutions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
This is Resolution Number 11624 that I am proud to read. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that John V. Kelly III be appointed as mayor of the Township of Nutley. I proudly move that.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Absence.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the Honorable Joan Caciola will be swearing in our new mayor. Oops.
I, John V. Kelly III? Do solemnly swear? That I will faithfully? Impartially? And justly? Perform all the duties? Of the Office of Mayor? Effective May 23rd, 2024? Through May 16th, 2028? In the township of Nutley? County of Essex, New Jersey? According to the best of my abilities? So help me God? I, John V. Kelly III? Do further solemnly swear? That I will support? The Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey? And that I will bear? True faith and allegiance? To say? The governments? Established in the United States and in this state? Under the authority of the people? So help me God?
Hopefully, I'll never have to use that. So I do, I do wanna say a few words about this occasion. And I have notes, so I don't lose my train of thought. First of all, I wanna say thank you. Thank you to everyone in this room. Thank you to the entire community of Nutley. There's so many people who got me here, and I'm well aware that I'm not gonna be able to say everyone's name and thank everyone who is here, and but just know that I know what you did, and I know what you did for me, and it's not gonna be forgotten. But this journey started way earlier than my announcement for reelection, the campaign, and even my election four years ago. It started over 39 years ago. My education, my temperament, my wit, my passion, and everything of who I am was cultivated and developed by my parents, John and Cindy Kelly. It was carried by my grandparents, the late former mayor and his son, John Kelly and Betty, Benny and Geraldine De Giacomo. It was supported by my five sisters, Lauren, Elise, Deandra, Alexa, and Krista. And no, I didn't forget anyone. As well as all my aunts, uncles, cousins, nieces, and nephews. And I think my nieces and nephews got me more votes than anyone in this room. I wanna thank in particular my uncle and godfather and campaign manager, Uncle Joe, my aunts. My aunt Susan, Kathy, and Regina, my cousin Treasurer, my cousin and Treasurer, Chris LaScora, and it's his birthday, by the way. Happy birthday, Chris. My cousin Matt, who is the tritiumity man of my campaign. I'm a product of Nutley, its educators, coaches, religious leaders, and everyone in the community, all of whom I can count on as friends. You all got me here, and I thank you for your love and support on this journey. It's only just the beginning, and we'll continue to reach new heights together. I ran on my golden record, but my record would not have been golden without, without my golden staff. The staff of the Department of Public Affairs and Health. I'll definitely forgive someone if I try to name all of you. Uh, but you are true public servants, and it's easy to have a golden record when you have such dedicated and zealous boots on the ground as you guys are. Thank you for all that you do, and I'm gonna thank you for all that I'm going to ask you to do over the next four years. I'm also a product of the Army. I got to witness firsthand some great leadership over my ten years of service, and I thank everyone who I've served with, and I thank all the veterans, particularly those in Nutley. Your passion, compassion, and advocacy has left a lasting impression on me. Uh, Tariq Marquisi, is he here? You're a gentleman throughout the campaign before and after as well, and I could see you up here one day. Marry and marry, are you here? It takes a tremendous amount of time, dedication, and effort to run a campaign, not to mention the courage to put yourself out there. You should be proud of what you accomplished. Uh, to Commissioner Evans, I do not think this town realizes how much you do behind the scenes, whether it's, uh, keeping our municipal budget in order, uh, keeping our taxes as low as possible, or pulling out your Rolodex, and I don't think you have a physical Rolodex anymore. But I, I know you have an incredible amount of contacts throughout the state. Thank you. Commissioner Tucci, our parks are second to none, and whenever I'm in Uber, we find, and we find ourselves driving next to one of the parks, the Uber driver will invariably turn around to me and say, this is such a nice town. Commissioner Scarpelli, you're one of the most even-keeled leaders I know. Uh, you're more than just a road guy. You do so much more, and you go above and beyond for this community, and you always make this, the road safe, recycling managed efficiently, and you're always going to lend a helping hand no matter what it is. Commissioner Petrako, you're one of the most honest people I know. You're a true man of integrity, and you go above and beyond at all times, and you work tirelessly to keep us safe. And if I were to detail everything you do, I would be here all day. There are two more people I wanna thank before I go into my actual speech. Uh, the first one is God. He's blessed me with so many blessings in life, uh, such a great family, and being born into such a great community. And the second one is Sarah. I, you can't. You, you can't imagine what it must be like trying to plan a wedding and having your, your future husband always say, ah, I gotta go run and do to this event, or go, go do this campaign speech. Uh, but she, she's been, she's been my, my backbone throughout the campaign, and, and I, I can't imagine continuing life without her. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Sarah to stand up this time, which I know is gonna embarrass her, but she has one more thing I wanna thank. The, the orange shoes. No, you could, you could keep them. Maybe they'll be in Nutley Museum one day. So thi- this is a great country. And our youth, uh, have an understandable desire to get out and experience this great country. See another great city, see the fruity plains, the amber rivers of grain, see the shining seas, our purple mountains majesties, all the great national parks and monuments, and our great lakes, but there's only one Nutley. And evidently, our young people will find their way back here and wanna stay here. Nutley is the destination of life. It is not a stop along the way. Whether you grew up here and never left, you left and found your way back, or were not fortunate enough to be born here but still found your way here anyway, Nutley is truly the destination of life. For our youth and those young at heart, it's the cradle of our dreams. For our families, it's a destination to raise a family. And for seniors, it's a destination to live the rest of your lives in quality. So if you're curious what a, what four years in the Mayor Kelly would be like, it has one goal, to enhance and build upon the foundation of this great destination. I'll work with the Board of Education and the rest of the Board of Commissioners to enhance the cradle of dreams that is Nutley for our most valuable resource, our young people. I'll work with Commissioner Evans and the rest of the Board of Commissioners to make this destination affordable for everyone. I'll work with Commissioner Tucci and the rest of the Board of Commissioners to enhance the cradle of youth's athletic dreams and build on the facilities that is this destination. I'll work with Commissioner Scarpelli and the rest of the Board of Commissioners to enhance our roads, so that we can safely and smoothly find our way home in, in this great destination. I'll work with Commissioner Petrako and the rest of the Board of Commissioners so everyone can feel safe and welcome in this community. I'll work with the Public Affairs and Health Department and the rest of the Board of Commissioners to keep this destination physically and mentally healthy, enhance the quality of life for those in special needs, for our seniors, and this country would not be a great country without our veterans. Uh, without your love, your sacrifice, and I'll continue to go to bat for you every day. First of all, I wanna hear from you, the residents of Nutley, on how we can continue and keep Nutley a destination of life. I'm always available to discuss. My door is always open, and my ear is always ready to listen. I wanna hear from you at any time. Nutley is the destination of life, and I'll keep it that way. Thank you. Well, in, in case any of the other commissioners wanted, is this, you do that after? All right. I, I, I got, I got here in twenty twenty during COVID, so it was a strange, uh, this is, so this is my first rodeo. Uh, so we're, we're gonna have the, uh, the first resolution number one one seven dash two four by, uh, Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Thomas J. Evans be appointed as Director of Revenue and Finance. I proudly move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Did we say something now, or even? No, okay.
See, we're all confused. All right. Uh, the next one is, uh, introduced by Commissioner Petrako.
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Moro G. Two, Two, Moro G. Two G be appointed as the Director of Parks and Public Property. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
When you said, "Thank you, Mayor," I thought you were talking in a long person. It's gonna take a little while to get used to that. I, I have the, the, the privilege for the next one. Uh, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Joseph P. Scarpelli be appointed as Director of Public Works.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Evans. Ev- Evans.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans.
Uh, Resolution number twenty dash twenty four, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Alphonse Petrako be appointed as Director of Public Safety. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that John V. Kelly III be appointed as Director of Public Affairs. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Abstain.
Moving on, uh, we have the Department assignments by, uh, this first one's gonna be by Commissioner Tucci.
That it is hereby determined that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees, and to other items as listed in the Department of Revenue and Finance in the budget of two thousand twenty four, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Department of Revenue and Finance, and that all the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the said functions and committees as listed hereafter B, and same are hereby assigned to the Department of Revenue and Finance as listed. I proudly move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
May. Oh, uh, next one is gonna be read by Commissioner Petrako.
Thank you. That it is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees and other items as listed in the Department of Parks and Public Property in the budget of two thousand twenty four, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Department of Parks and Public Property, and that all the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the said functions and committees as listed hereafter, hereafter B, and the same are hereby assigned to the Department of Parks and Public Property as listed. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
I, I have the next one. Uh, this is for the Public Works Department. That it is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, that all executive, administrative, and judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees, and other items listed in the Public Works Department in the budget of two thousand twenty four, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the Public Works Department, and that the executive, administrative, and judicial powers and authority and duties relating to said functions and as, and committees as listed hereafter B, be the same, and it's hereby assigned to, uh, as listed, uh, and I move the, the, uh, resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Next, we have introduction by Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. That it is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees and to other items listed in the Public Safety Department in the budget of two thousand twenty four, except as modified by this resolution, shall be exercised and performed by the, the, uh, Public Safety Department, and that all of the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties related to said functions and committees as listed hereafter B, and the same are hereby assigned to the Department of Public Safety as listed in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Uh, the, the next one, the next two will be read by, uh, Commissioner Scarpelli. Madam Clerk, uh, for the, the mayoral resolution, uh, we previously discussed listing the communications of the township. Uh, I'm not seeing it here. The, the mayoral resolution, it's on the bottom. Okay, oh, maybe it's not on my copy. Just read it into the record.
When you read the resolution. I'll just read it into the record.
Sorry for the technical difficulties, everyone. Commissioner Scarpelli.
That is hereby determined by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees, and to the other items as listed in the Public Affairs Department in the budget of two thousand twenty four, except as modified by this resolution, shall, shall be exercised and performed by the Public Affairs Department, knowing the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authorities, and duties relating to the said positions and committees as listed hereby, hereafter B, and the same has, are hereby assigned to the Public Affairs Department as listed. I've moved the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Abstain.
Whereas the so-called Commission Government Act, and as it is sometimes known as the Walsh Act, entitles an act relating to regulating and providing for the government of cities, towns, township, boroughs, villages, and other municipalities governed by boards of the commissioners or improvement commissioners in the state, approved April twenty fifth, nineteen eleven, and was duly adopted by the voters of Nutley, of the Township of Nutley in May nineteen twelve. And whereas by the mandatory provisions of said act and acts supplementary there too, and, and the mandatory thereof, it becomes the duty of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley to determine the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative authority and duties in the Township of Nutley into and among the departments as the Board of Commissioners and its judgment seems appropriate. And whereas in the judgment of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, by determination of powers and duties to be formed by each department, and the assignments there of two departments' public service will be benefited. And whereas the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative control of certain offices and their powers and duties is now vested in the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that all executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to the following positions and committees shall be exercised and performed by the mayor. And that all the executive, administrative, judicial, and legislative powers, authority, and duties relating to that said position and committees as listed thereafter, be and the same are assigned to the mayor, as listed, to also include communications. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
I'm sorry. As we all know, it's a habit. So Mayor Kelly.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh. And, uh, we, I, I go. Where, here it is. Wait, no, I don't go. Sorry, lost my place again. It's kinda confusing. Uh, you know, I do go.
You do go.
All right. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that all resolutions heretofore voted upon and passed by the individual commissioners are hereby ratified and passed subsequently to the members being duly sworn into office. Uh, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas NJSA forty A colon five dash fourteen requires municipalities to adopt a cash management plan to deposit or invest, or both deposit and invest its funds under this plan. Whereas the purpose of ca- of the cash management plan is to ensure the investment of local funds in, in interest-bearing, uh, accounts and other permitted investments. Whereas the cash management plan shall set policies for selecting and evaluating investment interests, in- instruments accordingly. Whereas the cash management plan shall be approved annually. Whereas the cash management plan shall be approved annually by a majority vote of the governing body and may be modified from time to time to reflect changes in federal or state law or regulations or the designations of depositories, funds, or investment instruments, or the authorization for investments. And whereas the cash management plan shall be subject to the annual audit conducted pursuant to NJSA 48:5-4. And whereas the chief financial officer shall be charged with administering the cash management plan. And whereas the chief financial officer charged with the custody of money shall deposit or invest them as designated or authorized by the cash management plan and shall, after that, be relieved of any liability for the loss of some, loss of such sums of money due to insolvency or closing of any depository designated or the decrease in value of any investment authorized by the cash management plan. By the way, we only invest in interest-bearing accounts that are not subject to the volatility of the market, just to be clear. Whereas the chief financial officer has submitted for the Board of Commissioner approval of a proposed cash management plan and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that, one, the cash management plan proposed by the chief financial officer with the approval of the Board of Commissioners is adopted as the cash management plan of the Township of Nutley, and all Township of Nutley officers with custody of public funds are directed pursuant to NJSA 48:5-14 to deposit and invest those funds under the adopted cash management plan. The cash management plan and the terms are outlined in the resolution, so I move the resolution as listed. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Two more, and then we'll hear from the rest of the Board of Commissioners. So as Mayor, I get the power to appoint certain municipal offices, and the first one I'm appointing is Allen J. Jennatempo to municipal judge. And my first job in law school as a law clerk was in the firm of Pirrosina and under the mentorship of Allen J. Jennatempo. So it's very apropos, and I'm proud to read this resolution. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Allen J. Jennatempo be reappointed as municipal judge for the Township of Nutley for a three-year term effective May 21, 2024 through May 20, 2027. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. And then the other appointment I have is the appointment of the town attorney, Jonathan Bruno. He's not here today. His law partner's here. And before you go after him for not being here, it's his father's 70th birthday and they're vacationing together. But John Bruno is definitely very even keeled and keeps us even keeled, especially when we have a lot of flares, because politicians tend to have a lot of flares and animation, and so he keeps us grounded. So I'm going to read this resolution. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Jonathan Bruno Esquire be reappointed township attorney for the Township of Nutley for a one-year term effective May 21, 2024 through May 20, 2025. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Okay. All right, so we're going to have Judge Caciola swearing Judge Jennatempo.
Let's hear it for them. Hey, Dan, are you here? Is my staff here? You're here. Come on, please.
I don't have. Where is it? Over there? Is it over there? Is that it right there?
It's fine. John is fine.
Hold on one second. We have it here. Yep, where did it go? Where did it go? It's three years, right? No, it's, oh, see it.
I am Vincent. Silence there. That I have faith. Parson. And justice. The formality. That the office of municipal justice. For the next few years.
Township of Nutley.
The Township of Nutley.
County of Essex.
For the best of my ability.
I am Vincent.
I am Vincent. We further challenge. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear. Through faithful allegiance, to the same.
The government.
And for the governments. Established in the United States. And in this space. Of the departed people. So help me God.
I also want to thank Judge Caciola for being here. And now she's on the Superior Court of New Jersey in Essex County, so thank you for coming. And we can't forget our former commissioners. Walt Smith is here. Thank you for being here. Then who wants to go first? Commissioner Evans?
Why not? So, thank you, John. First, I want to congratulate Zach. What a beautiful voice. Thank you for. Second is I want to thank Father Tom. I have this thing that I do is every time I see Father Tom, I ask him for his blessing. And so I want to thank you for being here today and offering the invocation for all of us, but also for your special blessing that I always look forward to. My son Andrew is here. My brother Ken is here. My campaign committee is here, and my employees are here. I want to thank all of you for coming out today and for your support. As a commissioner, there's a lot that we have to do. There's a lot of sacrifice. And I think I spread it all over town. I think if anybody hasn't heard it, that, you know, to be a commissioner in the revenue and finance seat, it takes a lot of time. Spend about 30 hours a week to make sure that we're getting our finances right. And I can, I promise you that I will continue to do that. My energy level, my desire to make sure that we are doing the very best we can for the township, I will deliver my best ability every day throughout this term. And I look forward to sitting with my fellow commissioners. I think we have quite a bit to do. The transactions that are in front of us, the challenges that we face as we look to this next term are significant, and no less among them are the financial challenges that we will face. But I'm fortunate in that I think as a governing body, we have demonstrated what it means for a governing body to work together, to trust one another, and to make good decisions for the benefit of the community. And I think if I was just to characterize my board and my fellow commissioners, there's one thing that I think is paramount in all of our thinking is that we represent all of you, every single resident in town. Nobody's excluded. Nobody has preference over anybody else. Everybody is equal, and we try to bring our very best to help everyone in the town, which I think is a hallmark of what has made Nutley a great place to live, a great place to raise family, and we avoid a lot of the crises that a lot of communities face. We will do everything that we can to assist the Board of Education as they work through their challenges, because in Nutley, everybody helps one another. And so we will be looking forward to working together with them and as we move forward. So to conclude my remarks, thank you for your confidence in me to reelect me to my position. I look forward to getting back to work. Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready.
I thought you were just going to continue along the line, but Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin today by thanking the people of Nutley for once again having the faith and confidence in me to allow me to continue serving. This is my seventh term, so at the end of this term, I will have served this township for 28 years. I see Judge Caciola smiling in the front. We both started back in 2020. Joanna's moved on and has continued to serve our township no matter what position she's in, and I'm proud that she's here, and I'm proud that all of you had the confidence in me. To all of you who supported my candidacy, either financially, allowing me to place a sign on your lawn, or by casting your vote for me, I will forever be in your debt. Rest assured, I'll continue to serve you to the best of my ability each and every day. To Mayor Kelly, Commissioner Petracca, Commissioner Scarpelli, and Commissioner Evans, my sincerest congratulations. I look forward to continue serving with you. You know, governing isn't easy, and it's not for everyone, all right? But for those that have the courage and are willing to make the commitment to make our town better, I commend each and every one of you. And we all need to always keep in mind that it's not about any one of us. It's always about all of us. And I know today we have some of our Board of Education members in the audience, and I just want to reassure them that I, and I'm sure I can speak for the mayor and all the commissioners, will always stand with you, will get through this crisis, we will right this ship, we will do whatever is humanly possible to make sure that our children get the education that they deserve, and that our professionals are treated in a fair and absolutely productive way. For the past 24 years, I've had the honor and privilege of serving as your Commissioner of Parks and Public Property, but the successes are not mine alone. I'd like to begin by thanking my Parks family, who in my opinion are the finest group of individuals ever assembled in any government anywhere in the country. And I know a bunch of them are here, so please indulge me because I am going to name them because they deserve it. Frank Gags, Mike, Linda, Mary, Theresa, Nicole, Chrissy, who retired but still helps us in the department, Jake, Michelle, Debbie, Janine, and all the guys in the back. Our parks and programs are second to none because of all of the work that you do, and I thank you and I appreciate you for everything each and every day. To my family, where it all starts, my wife Linda, my daughters Jeanne and Josephine, my son-in-law John Clifford, and all my grandchildren, they're all here, Lucia, Anthony, John, Mia, and Gigi, thank you, and I love you for all the sacrifices that you make so that I can do what I love on behalf of our township. To my siblings, some are here, some are not here, Kathy, Tommy, Shelley, my brother Tom, who we call T-Bird, who'll always be T-Bird, Rita, Gerard, Suzanne, all the nieces and nephews. I never could have been here and done this for this long without each and every one of you. I'm also very proud that my nephew Luke is here, who has just completed his first year in Princeton University, a product of the Nutley School System. I'd be remiss if I didn't give a special thank you to my brother Gerard, who's my business partner, my political advisor, and he's also the baby of the family. And I know the oldest is supposed to take care of the youngest, but I'm not the oldest. I'm the middle child, and he takes care of me more than I could ever take care of him. So Gerard, thank you, and I love you. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my pool store family, Ralph Caputo, who unfortunately is having a back issue today, so he can't be here, Joe Robes, who's in the back, Tommy Beany, Nino, Chuck, Jerry, Lombard, Nikki, and everyone else that comes and visits with us. I thank you for all your support over the years. You know, elected office is a gift given by the people. I want everyone to know that I appreciate each and every one of you, and I will not let you down. Thank you very much.
Before we continue, I just want to recognize a couple other elected officials I recognize in the stands. I see our county commissioner Brendan Gillen in the back there. Mayor Velvo, Michael Mellum. Some of our Board of Education members, we have Nick Scotty here. And President Sal Ferraro. And am I missing anyone? All right. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Kelly, fellow commissioners, honored guests, Reverend clergy. Firstly, I'd like to thank my committee for all their hard work throughout the campaign. They stuffed envelopes, folded things. We had these big bulky guys folded letters and stuffing them in envelopes, writing out postcards. I can't thank them enough for all they did. To my immediate family, my wife Sue, my son Sal, my girls Ari and Gianna, I could not do this without your support. My son-in-laws Nick and Kevin, my grandchildren Kira, Kevin, Nicholas, and Luca. Nicholas and Luca represent the seventh generation of my family to call Nutley their home. My mom, my nephew Anthony, my sister Trish, my uncle Vito, my Aunt Joanne, z, both Aunt Joann's. My in-laws Al and Ann and Grandma Vicki, Lili and Kitty, and all my friends for their love, hard work, and support. Thank you to the men and women of the DPW Department who make me look good every day. Let's hear a hand for them. Congratulations to Mayor Kelly and my fellow commissioners under reelection. Mayor Kelly, your grandfather's looking down. We certainly proud of you. Quite a legacy. Our first grandfathers and grandson mayors. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you also to Maria Hamlin and Dr. Larry Marchese for their time and efforts. Special thanks to my guardian angels who have guided me throughout the campaign and are with me every step of the way. To Allen J. Jennatempo, thank you for swearing me in and your friendship for over 40 years. Even though he's not here, John Bruno, thank you for what you do representing our town and your support and your counsel over the last four years. It is obvious from the election results that the people like the direction the town is going with all five commissioners being handily reelected. The issues we have faced over the last four years have been unprecedented, including the coronavirus pandemic and Hurricane Ida. Yet through it all, we persevered and emerged stronger as a community. Over the last four years, the repurposing of the former Roche property continued. Azai has now joined the Hackensack Meridian School of Medicine, Modern Meadow, Hackensack Meridian Center for Discovery and Innovation, YMabs, and Ralph Lauren. We now have a vibrant campus and a premier innovation hub that is fueling our local economy, producing quality jobs for our residents, and increasing our property values. And there's more to come. We have secured the land uses for those vacant parcels on the On3 campus that will have a minimal effect on traffic and services, yet produce valuable increase in revenue. We settled a long-term litigation with the owners of the pool club and went through the planning process, and will soon have a much-needed 55 and over luxury housing for our mature, not old, our mature residents who prefer to stay in Nutley when they're downsizing. Very soon, we'll have an agreement on selecting a redevelopment for the Chickolini site that will preserve parking, add beautiful open space, and kickstart the revitalization of Franklin Avenue. We have other challenges. We have to see how we can be helpful to our school system as we cannot let our students' education suffer. The overcrowding issue remains and still has to be solved. We have to reinvigorate our downtown and bring in the redevelopment of the Chickolini property to the finish line. I'm very excited about the future of our town. Thank you for the honor and privilege of serving the people of Nutley as your mayor for the last two years, and I look forward to the next four years. Thank you very much.
So I already forgot someone. I mean, he volunteered for my campaign, and he's retiring from politics. He's a ninth consecutive term winner in Velvo, Councilman John Natare. He's a ninth consecutive term winner in Velvo, Councilman John Natare. And, and we have a congressional candidate Carmen Buco in the back there, I see. He does all my suits. And now we'll hear from Commissioner Petracca, last but not least.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First, I don't want to make my speech about Joe and I, but I have to tell you in 2008, when we came on, we both didn't wear glasses. And now that, and now that he's sitting next to me again. It's funny how we started and came back together. His bond on these beaches are this big. So, things are changing, Joe, but, but welcome back. The first people I want to thank, and usually I learn from Moro to thank my wife first, but I'm going to have to skip over you for a second, sweetheart. Because I really never, ever do this and I have to do it today. I want to thank everyone that serves in public safety. I have to tell you, the cops have a very, very difficult job, as we all know. They're out there 24/7, snow, rain, whatever the weather, holidays, Christmas, and they do a great job along with their fire department. I see Gabe is representing, the guys went on a call, sorry for that, Mary, that you got interrupted. But her job never ends and they are here. Anywhere in our town in two minutes. Uh, uh, one of my customers came in the store the other day from up in the country somewhere. 45 minutes for a cop to come to their house. So I like to think we are spoiled in Nutley because it's not like that everywhere. So please, let's get up off the floor and give them a, a round of applause. Thank you. Now moving right along, I just want to introduce my beautiful wife, who has stood by my side and ironically has kept her mouth shut for almost 20 years with two politics, which is a big thing. So I want to thank Fran, stand up and wave to everybody. I have my son Vincent here, anybody who needs financial work, he's great at it. Well, I'm a little drunk. He's the only one that showed up for me. So my, my other son, as, as the mayor knows, is a lawyer at home. So when John beat me this time, I said, I'm not really crazy about lawyers anymore. Then he, um, Sonny couldn't be here and Savage, where when we first started and again I came out with Joe. And, you know, back then, there was one seat open because your dad was retiring. And we'd be a legend, the two of us, who was Carmen Raco, who was a spectacular man and really, really cared about this town. And Carmen, if you're looking down at us, this one's for you as well. So you're very well missed and it's been an honor for me to sit in his seat and represent the people of Nutley. And people sometimes say, you know, you remind me a lot of Carmen. And that's really, um, an honor for me. Um, I just want to recognize my friend Bonn in the back too. Let's hear for Bonn, Bonn, raise for the crowd. So Father Tom, I, I have to tell you a real story. And I love St. Mary's Church and St. Mary's is my parish and that'll never change. So Bonn brings me to the Church on the Hill, Mount Carmel. And John and I were there yesterday. And I have to tell you, I go to, I'm not a morning person, everybody on the board knows that. And he gets me to eight o'clock in the morning. At nine o'clock, Father Tom, it's like Studio 54 used to be there playing music, drinking. The father has a hat, I gotta get you a hat, Father Tom. They play music, but Bonn, thanks, thank you for all your help. Um, Sam Corolla, where are you, Sam? God blesses, God blesses people. Sam has been a godsend because you think you're never silly, John? When I first got elected, I owned a deli, I wasn't a lawyer. And without Sam, I would never have been to the point that we got to. And I wanted to also thank, thank Linda, um, Dycheson. Joe, Jerry, my chief Tommy Schrumler, Tommy and I have gotten, we're like brothers. And I know I drive you crazy calling you all hours at night, but let's hear it for Chief, he does an excellent job. So I also want to mention my good friend Joanne Caciola, honorable Joanne Caciola. And I just want to thank you so much for being a judge, Joanne, because I know if you were still here, none of us would have had a chance for that chair. Joanne was unbeatable. So God bless Joanne. So in closing, and, and you know, I, I do want to say congratulations to my good friend Moro Tucci as well. When I came on this board, I was really, really, really green. And Moro really was my mentor on this board. He took me under his wing, spent countless hours coaching me, helping me, not for his best interest, but for my best interest. And Moro, being my mentor all these years, I'm having a problem with my filter, well, I said today. So you might see Gerard here. Moro, from the bottom of my heart, I would have never lasted all these nerves. Um, I can remember when I first, there was running and you brought me to the TikTok time and you started explaining to me about a budget. You know, when I first opened my belly, we, we worked with all cash, there was no credit cards. I was very good with cash, I wasn't so good with budgets. But Tom, and I said this during the campaign, is a necessity to this town. You know, if you guys follow his job around, people don't know what he does. I am so happy to call you my friend and for you to be back here. Give, give Tom a round of applause. So just real quick, because I don't want to be too long, and this isn't a story about little al, guys, don't worry. But it's about Mr. Kelly. So John John grew up in my neighborhood, I'm going to say he's correct. But so when I was about 10 years old, I'd probably weigh 50, 60 pounds. And I was Mr. Kelly's newspaper boy. And I didn't know who Mr. Kelly was. Joe and John are much, much older than me, as you can tell. But anyway, I used to ride my bike and I would throw the paper up, you know, in Dad's house. And I would, we'll never hit this stoop, John. So one morning, your grandfather, their father, was out there reading for me and it slipped in a robe. And I threw the paper. It hit the, it actually hit the porch and it fell off. And he says, get over here. I'm like, should I keep riding my bike? He goes, what the hell is wrong with you? I want my newspaper on this stoop every morning, you understand that? I'm like trembling my pants, right? I go, you go, what's the information for me? I go, yes. I, he goes, you know what my name is? No. My name's Mr. Kelly. I run for Mr. Kelly every morning, it'll be there, little tears are coming out of my eyes. Right? I start pedaling my bike away from your house. And I hear this voice, hey, Kelly, get over here. I go, I didn't want to go back, I rode back. Mr. Kelly had a $20 bill in his hand. He says, here, you're a good kid, make sure to pay, my newspaper's on your books. So the Kellys have a long history with the Democrats. I, I, I truly miss your dad so much, John and, and Joe. He was, when I first got elected, he was in my corner as well. Your son is going to do a fine job, he's a fine young man and I want to congratulate the Kelly family and our new mayor, Mayor Kelly. Thank you.
So I said enough already, uh, do I have a motion for a pen and a German?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And the time is 1:25.